All right.
All right, well, Paul's meeting is over at 6:31. We're set him on the agenda as a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, next up is the gender review. Since this is our first time doing a virtual meeting, I'll kind of go over how we're going to do this. Anytime you want to say something, just so we're not talking over each other, just raise your hand and I will, if I will say, when I see you raise your hand, I'll, I'll say something that, acknowledging that you raised your hand and whatnot, and I will do my best to make sure I don't miss anybody.
There's also a chat feature. So if people have a question or something, they can put it inside. I don't know if people see that. If you scroll to the bottom. Of course, it's not happening right now when I do it. But there's an option for chat and you can click that and it'll show up on the side.
Okay. So I, that's the only agenda review I had, just. Okay, moving on, we're on to consent agenda. Approval per minutes from March 17th. I'll take, I'll need a nomination for approving those minutes. Got motion? Terry. Terry, you're muted.
Can I unmute her? Terry? On the bottom of your screen, there's, there you go.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I make the motion that we approve the minutes of the last quarter. Thank you.
Dawn, second. Any discussion?
I'm just glad those aren't my docs.
All right. Uh, I don't see anyone raising their hand, so all those who favor approving the March 17th minute, say bye-bye by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? Uh, motion carries nine zero. Uh, on to next item on the agenda, presentation. First one up is administration update, which are written in all your books. Megan?
You're muted.
Just a note, if everyone wouldn't mind muting themselves if they're not talking, that will help alleviate some of this feedback that we're hearing.
Right. Okay, so, uh, like I said, next up was presentations, administrative updates. They're all on the Google Docs. And unless our administrators have anything to add, which no one's raising their hand, so I believe we're good. Okay, then on to superintendent updates. First up is food service.
Um, well, you have my, um, written report. I, um, included the letter that I wrote, um, with, and other superintendents gave input. It was in the messenger today as the letter to the editor. Um, and we just wanted to, uh, make it really clear how much we support our teachers during this time and how important their work is. Uh, there's been some sort of backhanded thank yous, I think, of our teachers recently, uh, and once in the messenger, and we wanted to make it really clear that, um, our teachers and administrators and support staff are going above and beyond, and we thank them and we, I cannot tell you the difference in Franklin County and how teachers in all our districts are coming together. And, uh, that is not necessarily the experience of superintendents in other parts of the state, and it just says a lot about our community. So I wanted to make sure you saw that, that correspondence. The food service, we are, if you saw it in the newspaper, uh, MBU is the biggest site in the state, and Franklin has never been so excited about how much food that they're producing, like a ridiculous amount more than they usually do. Everybody is all hands on deck, and we're the largest food preparation and distribution site in the state right now. Our teachers, we keep expecting, you know, people to say, gee, well, now that we're doing this other task, we're going to step back a little. That's not happening at all. Uh, folks are, um, so excited to see the kids and to bring food to our families. And it is, we get phone calls all the time. Uh, and my neighbors have coolers out at the end of their driveway because they've got kids at home. It's, it's impacting absolutely everyone, and I'm just, I couldn't be prouder of the team that is making this happen. Um, and we have every intention of continuing over the April break. We will be following our school calendar, so there won't be school, but we have enough folks, and the bus companies are right on board, and they've been tremendous, as have the Abbey, uh, as well, in this whole effort. Um, so everybody is on board to deliver food over the April break as well. Um, as we're longer in our isolation, I just worry more and more about families' access to food, even just the fact that they're at home, working from home or not working. And, you know, you're not supposed to go to the store every time you think of something that you'd like to have. Uh, and the kids are home all day, eating you out of house and home. So it's, uh, it's really a huge service that we're doing. The distance learning plan, uh, in the written report, Jen wrote quite a bit about that. Um, from pre-K through 12th grade, folks have been collaborating incredibly on that planning. Uh, Jen and Koshia have really aligned so that the elementary teachers and the high school teachers are seeing videos and, um, presentations based on, um, the principles to really frame our thinking for this learning that's going to be happening. The shift is going to be a tough one, but it's really coming down to what can our kids handle? What can our families handle? Um, kids are not in our classrooms. They're at the kitchen table with their moms who are trying to work as well, or their dads, or their brothers, or their, you know, neighbor. So, and, and it's hard to, to do. It's, it's not the same as having kids for seven hours a day. It just is not, and it's a lot for our families. Um, and Jen is a great example. She's got the disorder family schedule, uh, and she modeled that for her teachers so that they would be thinking about what's on the plates of our families. And most of our teachers are doing the same thing in their homes as well. So that's going to the state tomorrow, I think. Uh, and, uh, we have all aspects of a plan around communication and structures for success and the instructional methods, uh, and how we're going to get instruction into the hands of kids who don't necessarily have the same access as others. So, um, I'm very proud of the team that has put that together, and it's been a huge amount of work. And just today, we got guidance on assessment and, uh, how to handle that. So there's a lot, and there's a lot that comes out from the agency every day. Sback has been waived. There's no state end-of-year testing. But, um, we do have to figure out how to assess and grade student learning through the rest of the year. Um, and Jen worked with other regional high school folks to sort of come together, see what they were doing. I think she has a very good plan for MBU. Especially our, our year-long courses. We've got three semesters that we can really leverage there as well. And I don't want to speak more about it. I'd let Jen do it if anybody has any questions. Um, and through this, please, if you have questions, make sure that you reach out, um, to, uh, to us so we can get the answers to people, because I know this is a difficult venue for that.
Uh, Megan?
I'm sure it comes as no surprise that I have so many questions. Uh, you know, it's just speaking from the parent point of view, um, for the elementary school students. Uh, I've heard a few different things from families. Uh, one is progression of grades is, it expected that, you know, next fall, my student who is a third grader will become a fourth grader. Uh, my kindergartner become a first grader, how that is going to work. Um, and also, um, has there been any discussion about resources for parents? I know we have a great, uh, guidance counselor staff. Uh, has there been any discussion for outreach to parents beyond just, um, you know, letting us know that they're here and available?
Yes, um, in terms of grade progression, there's been no conversation and no expectation or guidance to suggest that we will be holding anyone back as a result of this. Um, we can expect as a country, uh, let alone as a state, that there will be a shift in outcomes for kids as a result of this virus. Uh, our teams, uh, the coaches work together with administration to identify the narrowest number of priority standards. What are those high leverage things that we want kids to know that are going to make the biggest difference? And that's where the focus is. Um, I think it's too many lessons a week and then two activities a week in literacy and mathematics are the main focus. And then students are getting access to other unified arts and things like that. It's different per school. Um, and in terms of resources, we do have school counselors that are reaching out to families. We have, um, some of our counselors that have a caseload of kids. They're continuing to reach out. Um, but I think, uh, one of the things I want to make sure we put on our website is a list of resources that families can have if they're having a crisis, if they're just struggling. Um, you know, we obviously have 2-1-1 up on our website, so families who are struggling with any kind of resources can call there, um, because they're like a clearinghouse. But, uh, NCSS, I know, though they've laid off some folks, um, my understanding is that's, you know, the one-on-ones that work with students, and that's supposed to be very temporary. Um, and they have clinical staff that are working remotely and working with kids and families too.
Uh, Joanne?
Hi. I don't know if it's maybe too early, um, to ask, but is there a possibility of, um, summer school or a heavier load? Or maybe something that would be beneficial for some students to just, just because of, I don't know, the way the, the teaching's going right now? You're going to have obviously different learning levels. Do you, do, do we see the possibility of, um, summer school being beneficial for a group of kids? For some kids?
Uh, Jen?
Um, so we are planning right now to proceed with summer school as we normally do, and our summer school has, in the past, consisted of two kind of portions. One is credit slash proficiency recovery, where we work with students to, um, get, uh, reteaching opportunities and reassessment from things that happened during the year. And then the other half of the summer is usually dedicated to pre-teaching skills for them to be successful in the following year. So we've targeted summer school in that way in the past. We're moving forward with that plan right now, that we will be able to do the same thing. Um, how we identify students for each of those things might shift a little based on the changes. But as of right now, we're moving forward as though summer school can happen. Um, and then we'll, we'll await more direction from the governor around, around things like that.
I have a question also. Do we have any information on buy-in with or participation with students? Um, I mean, I know some students don't have the same access, but are we getting everyone? Are we, do we have any idea if some kids not participating by choice? Is it because they don't have internet? I mean, do we have any idea where we're at with that?
We have, um, surveyed how much internet access folks have, uh, and we're drilling down even more. I mean, some people said they have internet access because they have a phone, right? And then that's not necessarily the ideal venue for a child to be watching lessons or doing homework. So, um, we're finding that information out, and the Agency of Ed really wants to put some resources out there for families, um, if we can identify where those places are. Uh, and yes, we, we are now moving into a place where we need to take attendance. It's not the regular kind of attendance, because we're not evaluating seat time. Um, but teachers have been reaching out. Any, any kind of evidence and communication with a child is considered attendance, right? So if I'm a high school student and I worked on a Google Doc with one of my teachers, that counts. All my teachers don't have to call. I mean, some of our families with multiple kids are getting phone calls from multiple teachers, and they're trying to work from home. It's very overwhelming. So we're trying to streamline things. Uh, and we have, uh, spreadsheets of contact logs for students, um, where we have not been able to make contact. And people are taking steps to reach out in a variety of ways. Other people are taking that on, guidance votes, principals, and so forth, trying to make sure that we get in touch with families, make sure everybody's all set.
Yep. Thank you.
The last one that I had really was just a childcare update, because when we spoke last time, we were getting ready to do a childcare site at Swanton School. And, uh, Dina and Justina were wonderful at giving us a classroom. Uh, Wendy worked tremendously hard. Uh, Carol had staff. People just came together and we put together a classroom. Um, we had a very small number of children there at the classroom. Uh, and we received further guidance and emphasis from the Agency of Ed and others saying, you know, really, instead of schools doing this work, it was, um, it became possible and encouraged for private providers to provide childcare. Uh, if you remember, the governor closed the childcare and then asked schools to be childcare, um, for essential workers. And what happened was really wonderful, because DCF had funding that would really make it free for families of essential workers and provide money to, uh, private providers who were maybe struggling because they didn't have their usual families. So we were able to make that happen. So all of our families were matched, and our last day of childcare was last Friday. And I'm just very grateful for those folks who stepped up and took that on, because it was, it was a tremendous effort. And that's really all I had. And if you had any questions about any of the other, um, parts of the newsletter, please let me know. Um, Robert has done an incredible job, Laura, all the principals, Kosh. I mean, just everybody has been working in their area to make sure that everything is working well for kids and teachers in this time. And, uh, Robert has been incredibly popular. I'm just calling on him because I see his icon there on the screen. Um, because we are now working in this remote world, and all of a sudden, we all have to become experts on Google Meet. So, uh, in other, other methods, and we have to have policies on how to interact with kids. And so there's been a tremendous amount of work. So I tried to capture a little bit of that. I'll stop talking.
Uh, Megan?
Um, so another question that I, I've heard, um, from parents and one that I have myself is, uh, in looking at the latest continuing learning outline that we were provided, um, late last week, the timing of everything, and I know that there are other school districts that are already up and running with Google Classroom or Zoom classrooms. Um, and I'm just wondering if we could get a bit more information on why we won't be up and running until the end of April?
So we have our continuing, the, the state asked us all to hold off on our continuation of learning plan until the 8th, and that's when we're submitting our plan. That's when everyone's submitting our plan. Some schools are doing Google Classroom and things, but they're still in a transition maintenance of learning. So how they're doing it may look different from school to school, but everybody right now is in a maintenance of learning format. Some teachers may be jumping ahead and doing things that they're excited to do and reach out to their kids in different ways. But in terms of school districts having plans, uh, we're all in maintenance of effort. Our, our next week of the 13th, that is going to be sort of like a first week of school where we're making sure everybody knows how to use the technology. Everybody is, is in a routine, getting the new norms set up for students and families about how to communicate with one another and start the lessons. And then when we come back to vacation, we'll be all, we'll be, you know, ready to go full tilt. Um, half the state has their school vacation the week of the 13th, and the other half of the state has it when we do, which is the next week. I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm in a conversation with superintendents every day from, uh, Addison County to Chittenden, Grand Isle, and Franklin County, and we're all in the same place.
We have the same vacation.
Yep.
And so just to follow up to that, that might be a misunderstanding for how, for how I read that letter. So next week, are the students involved in anything next week? Or is it just the, the teachers and faculty staff getting up to speed with the, um, with the new technologies?
I don't have your Swanton letter in front of you, but whatever maintenance of learning activities have been going on in Swanton will be going on again next week.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Uh, seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda, which is new business. Uh, and we're going to go down through facility plan updates.
So I'm going to see if I can share it on the screen, but I don't want the people to disappear so that you can't see them. So let's see how that works.
I can share it, Julie.
Okay, if you do that, that'll probably be better.
I can try, should I say?
Because you also have it, this is where I like to have it home in my office. I have two screens up because.
Can you see it now? Can you see it now, Julie?
Nope.
It says it's, says it's shared. How about, how about now?
It's coming.
It's loading.
There it is.
Happening.
Look at that. Fancy.
A little too large of, uh, for the screen, but hopefully you can see it the same way that I can see it. So, um, Julie had requested that I sort of start with an overview of the process. Kind of how we're developing these plans and sort of how we're working together with facility directors. So all of our, all of our boards prior to the MBSD merger sort of had their own philosophies around how they did their facility, um, planning and, and maintenance. MBSD, and for now, we've chosen to, uh, have Julie and myself, um, meeting frequently with facility directors and helping them to develop these kind of short and long-term plans. We've also been adjusting, uh, what falls under, um, what you'd see in the first column, which is I call R and M cycle or repair and maintenance cycles.
I can't see it anymore. Can everybody else see it still? No, it disappeared.
Oh.
Yeah, it is gone.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and so in the first column where it says annual repair and maintenance cycle, those are things that we feel like we can handle, um, annually, um, either in small chunks or things that we can identify that would be have, would have to happen every year. And then the next three columns sort of represent short-term capital projects, and then one-to-five-year capital projects and the five-to-10-year capital projects. That's sort of how we've decided to move forward with this plan. Um, and what I've done is if you continue to go down on the spreadsheet, um, it's broken down by school, so we start with Franklin. And you'll notice to the side, there's Franklin's budget. So under repair and maintenance, you'll notice the $48,000. Um, and then the next few columns over under short-term capital projects, you'll see the $20,000. That's what's in the fiscal year '21 budget by school. Um, so if we go down, you'll see Highgate, uh, MBU, and then Swanton. And this document is in the shared drive as well. So basically, what I've tried to do is take their separate plans, um, through our meetings together with Julie, and, um, kind of mainstream them or streamline them into certain categories. Um, and so each school should theoretically have all the same categories for repair and maintenance and allocation if, if they've, if they, if it's relevant to their building. You will notice as you look through this that, um, right now, most of the annual estimates for repair and maintenance and some of the capital project totals are over what the allocation is, that's been budgeted. Uh, and we're working through that. We're still working on this, and unfortunately, this whole COVID situation um, stopped that progress, uh, other than via phone and email when we can. Um, but, but we will address that, and our, our plan is, um, to work within the constraints of the budget, obviously, and prioritize to the best of our ability, um, working together as a team. So that's myself, Julie, and all of the facility directors, which I think the conversations have gone, um, very well and continue to kind of grow and, um, develop as we're moving through it. Um, so I just wanted to draw your attention to the short-term capital project columns. Um, items in red, I spoke to facility directors over the last week or so. Um, given our current situation, the items in red are things that are sort of non-negotiable to the facility directors. They've been identified as, um, top priorities. When you notice Highgate, you'll see on the side, there's, um, I've highlighted, uh, bond issues, uh, bond issues or projects. And then, um, if it doesn't say bond, then that would be something that would have to come out of their $40,000. You'll see again, obviously, the, the parking lot HVAC controls and some issues with their boilers need to be addressed. If I go down to MBU, for, for them, it's really this access, uh, kitchen access, um, door unit, um, which is also a safety and security issue, um, as that's a, a large emergency exit for the school that Paul would like to address. This one actually should be red too. I'm going to change that right now. And, um, he would like to work on the air handler replacement cycle as well. Working our way down to Swanton, um, he, Jason feels strongly that, uh, the upgrades and renovations to the garage, um, that they have in Swanton is really his top priority right now. And as, as you look at the other issues, um, you know, we're, we're still continuing to have discussions about these in the prioritization, but right now, given the fact, um, that we're in this COVID situation, I, I, again, I just sort of asked them to try to highlight if we did have, obviously, an issue with revenues next year and maybe for the remainder of this year, I wanted them to be prepared to, um, have those discuss, tough discussions on, on what might have to be prioritized over other things. So really, this is informational for the board at this point. I wanted to assure the board of the process that we're following, the conversations we're having, and that they're all, um, sort of working together to develop these, um, plans, both short and long term. And assure the board that we, when we have these conversations, you know, the focus is staying within the constraints of the budget as it stands right now, understanding that, uh, shifts and, um, adjustments are going to have to be made along the way and, and as, uh, priorities change or things surface.
Yep.
Uh, Dawn?
Laura, with the, with this virus, what's happening to projects that we had planned to do? The bids that we had accepted? Uh, are they all on hold or are we, we have an exception?
So the fencing project and the woodchip boiler, um, project and, um, the J-Pod flooring is what you're talking about that you approved last meeting, correct?
Yeah, that's some of it, yeah. But any other big projects we might have had too, like the doors? You've just mentioned the exit doors and, uh, and MBU. Can we get people in to do those jobs?
Well, the exit, so what I'm talking about, what's in front of you right now is all things that wouldn't start until July, that would be fiscal year '21 money. Um, so, so hopefully by, by then, um, that's sort of what I'm looking for, is I wanted to identify those projects within the budget for the summer work and sort of make, you know, make the board aware that those are the, the projects that we would, would hope to move forward with. As far as the projects for this year, um, the ones, the J-Pod flooring and the things at MBU and some of the other schools, um, we're not on hold. I think, well, we are in the short term, um, but like, I, we're still issuing. We're not on hold. I think, well, we are in the short term, um, but like I, we're still issuing contracts contingent upon them being able to come to work. We're, so we're still moving forward as much as we can. We're looking into them filing the paperwork to become essential businesses. But, uh, we'd love to have the fence at MBU installed as soon as possible, um, but we're working through the process, you know, things that have to be in place for that to happen. But we are issuing the contracts. And pushing to have that work done as soon as possible.
I, I asked a question because I also know that many vendors in this, well, not even now, but before the virus. They don't stock a lot of stuff anymore.
Right.
They get a job and they order it and it comes and sometimes delivers away. I just. I just kind of, the progress or process was moving along. It sounds like it is. I just, I know June will have money made to do things. But the vendors are gonna have to be ready to, uh, take some risks, I guess.
Yeah, I've reached out to, um, we have, uh, questions that we send to Visbit as a superintendent, a large VSA group. Uh, in Pietro and Piafold and, and a whole team that Visbit works with. They're answering questions, uh, and I asked the question about. We'll say, take the fencing, for example, that's an outdoor project. Uh, it would be in the business, the, the contract. They may not. They may not, uh, putting up a fence may not be considered a, uh, essential, right? The boiler might be, right? The J pod is inside. So, you know, we're playing it, uh, by ear to see, you know, when vendors will be available, when supply chains will be available. Uh, you know, but we're, we're moving forward with this.
My question is actually.
Yeah. There's a lot of steps.
Thank you.
We're also limited by the contractors themselves because contract, uh, construction is not an essential business, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to be creative.
I guess we're, you know, my, my, my conversations with Paul and Jason have been. We are doing everything we can to move forward in any way that we can, as long as we're protecting the district while we're doing it and our staff, obviously, so. You know, we'll, we'll continue to think that way and get stuff done as we can, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I think the last part that we wanted to make sure is the way we have. We, we want to bring, it feels like we keep trying to bring, uh, facility directors and information to the board and then something appears to happen every time. Uh, but one of the things that we've discussed in our group is having a regular facility update. As part of our administrative updates. So it may not even be every month. It may be every other month, but have that be a regular part of the updates to the board. Of course, this year is a bit disruptive, but that can be, we expect that you can, that's to be, um. Half of the core moving, moving forward.
Uh, you had suggested, someone had suggested, uh, that the, the facilities director.
Yeah.
And so what you're talking about would be really good. We get the information that could be collated and put into a report to the public.
Absolutely.
Right. Yes. No.
Anybody, I can't see everybody. So does anybody have any questions? Cause I can't see Devin, Jen, Joanne, Steve, or Terry. Terry, I see your hand up. Okay. Go ahead, Terry.
I had, hi, I actually had more of a comment and that is, I think this is really helpful. Especially based on some of the things we talked about at our last meeting in terms of getting things instead of bringing them up each time individually. This really gives us great perspective. Thank you.
Well, Laura and the business, uh, the facility folks, um. In I as well, but they have been working tremendously hard to sort of come together and have conversations about. Repair and maintenance and projects and really identifying things they do regularly in buildings. And what those needs are because they're all aware that we're a single district and we need to prioritize things together and, um. Really, we have a stewardship responsibility for our buildings. And they're, they've been sharing his and talking about sharing equipment and talking about. How they can help the viewer. So it's really been a very good process. Um, and I think the next stage is then to just, we have, it was a big piece of. Uh, how to continually inform the board about what's going on. How we can give updates so that things aren't a surprise to you because I know that that's the worst.
Right.
And I would just add that I'm going to be working on, um, we know we have also equipment needs and within our buildings occasionally, and some of those are budgeted for, um. From year to year, depending on what the needs are. But I'll be developing a, a plan for that as well, um, that we work through, um, as a team. As far as those needs as well, that's, we haven't, we haven't necessarily gotten to that point yet, but. That'll be the next piece.
Absolutely.
Okay, so seeing no questions, uh, we'll move on to. Prioritize projects.
Um, well, I sort of highlighted that and I'm sorry, it's a little bit difficult for me to present when I can't see any of you and all I see is my spreadsheet. So I'm doing the best I can, but, um, again, the prioritizations are really. Looking at what should be considered as repair and maintenance, and that's really that first column and trying to streamline. What that looks like and what, as much as we can cover, I'm really trying to move as much into repair and maintenance as possible. Anything that's not a larger ticket item that, you know, does come up every year or could be handled, like a carpet replacement cycle or, um. Flooring replacement or cleaning the ducts. Maybe replacing windows and doors and trying to cycle through that. And just trying to move as much of that into that maintenance cycle in our normal budget as possible because. You know, I just think with these larger budgets and taking care of so many buildings, it's going to be harder to look at things like bonds. So we have to try to take care of and, and maintain our buildings to the best of our ability and sort of budget for those funds in that way. In my opinion, is a lot easier than, than trying to wait till it all piles up and then we, we have to look for larger amounts of money. Um, so really that's what I've done here on the first column and repair and maintenance, and we're going to continue to do that. Um, but it will make life a lot easier, not only for them, but also for me from, for a budgeting perspective, um, and to bring that information to the board. And then the prioritize projects really in that short-term column for fiscal year 21. Um, so here it's really those items in red. It's not to say the other i- items. Let me look down here. For instance, the scoreboard and the central door security and bathroom stalls and Swanton, those are all still issues that Swanton would love to handle next year and that those are in their plan. Um, one thing you'll notice is it says $75,000 budgeted here and he would love to tackle 113,000. Um, so we need to work on, on scaling that back. Um, and prioritizing and we'll continue to do that within the constraints of the budget. Um, but the one thing, if we're in a rough situation next year because of this COVID situation, the lack of revenues that are being created in the Ed Fund. You know, the one thing he's saying he'd really like to tackle is this garage, uh, storage renovation that for him is a priority. And those are the kind of things that I think he would highlight or they would highlight in that memo to the board, um, that we'd like to do. Maybe quarterly or every other month, um, they could expand upon. You know. Why those are a priority and then if, if the work did, um. Become initiated, then they would share the progress in that as well. And again, you know, I mean. Oh, and the one to five year, the one to five year columns.
It just unplug.
Okay. Down here.
His chair is up on the, or chair on it?
Yep.
Oh.
Hang on.
Okay.
We, we lost everybody. Hang on.
They were still there. That's fine.
Steve, I can hear okay.
I'm here. I can hear okay.
It was our.
Yeah, we just accidentally unplugged. No, we don't want to update any software right now. Thank you.
I guess the last thing that I would point out is the red is the priority for next year, you know, but I guess. What we'd like to do is have the flexibility to, if priorities change, um, things, projects surface. Things, things come to light or, or become more urgent than maybe they are at this point in time. You know, we would work as a, as a, as an administrative team to, to reevaluate how we spend these funds. Um, but I'm hoping that this gives the board, um, the information they're looking for as far as, you know, what kinds of issues they are. And this would be a living document, basically, that we would keep adjusting.
Right. And then lastly, facility updates and sharing information with the board.
I think we already talked about how we were going to do that.
Well, under that, uh, I think we can discuss the Highgate parking lot because a lot has come to. To fruition as of, even as of just today, uh, we had a meeting earlier today, uh, discussing the parking lot. And the, due to the COVID situation, our. Grant funding isn't guaranteed, it's guaranteed, but we don't actually have a letter saying it's guaranteed, right? Am I saying that correctly, Laura?
They awarded it last week, the week before, and I, well, the week before, and then I, I double checked that it was actually awarded and due to the COVID, we would still be receiving that. Those funds last week, she said yes. Yesterday, when I spoke with her, she said that they will not sign a grant agreement right now. Due to the COVID situation.
And then another concern we're having, uh, we've had Regina, 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 Reg. Regina, thank you. Working with us through this whole thing and they've been reviewing the plans that the stormwater people put together for us. And they are not confident that the plans, what we want or is even the financial way, best way to go. So we're reevaluating that because they planned everything as a one-year storm event. Which means, uh, the way they do those is once a year, they, you can plan on getting a rain event with this. Whereas when we originally looked at this, you're planning for a once in 10 year event. Uh, so the problem is these, uh, water chambers are probably not big enough to handle the volume of water. So we're reevaluating that and we're running into a lot of roadblocks. Information from, uh, the stormwater grant peoples. Slow and patchy when it's hard to. Get a straight answer sometimes, or we have to work. A little harder to get the information we want. So we may have to have a decision the next meeting or the following meeting to decide whether we're going to proceed without. The stormwater grant. We may have a lot more information from the stormwater grant people by next meeting. Uh, or we may have to postpone the parking lot. Uh, to next year. Uh, we don't want to do this. Uh, quickly and do it wrong because it's a lot of money and it needs to be done right. But at the same time, I'd, you know, if we can get the grant, it'd be great. But, uh, if the grant forces us to do something that's not going to be a good fix, then we have to reevaluate.
It's been frustrating.
Very frustrating and. And I want to thank Laura for all the extra effort because it's, it's been frustrating. Can we shrink that down so we can see everyone?
That's what I was trying to do, but I can't figure it out. Hello, everybody. Yep, they're just muted. I am not sure why.
Can you zoom now? I think that's what it.
Robert, unmute and tell me how to make this. Look smaller because all of a sudden.
Did you use the grid view in the upper right?
Yeah, but now I can't even, I can't, oh, there we go. For some reason, there it is. It zoomed. So all of a sudden I couldn't even see the menu. And I couldn't, and Chris can't see the people. Now he can see the people on the call.
Perfect. So seeing nobody with their hands up, I guess we can move on. We're on to old business. First up is, uh, check warrants.
Okay, you, um, I, I did put the warrant file, um, there's two separate files. One's the backup and one is the cover page, but these are the warrants through the month of March. I guess I could share that if you would like to see it.
Laura, I have the printout too. I just printed it, uh, a little while ago.
Okay.
Thirty-five K. There wasn't very many.
Um, no, this is three million.
Okay, that's not mine.
This is the war, all, all of the warrants that, um, were paid for March.
Okay, and there wouldn't be other things approved today. It would have the lunch program and. And everything.
No, those were the, those were the most recent bills that you approved today. That's, so those are new bills, um, that we're looking to get signed by the treasurer tomorrow. That would be in the month of April. Um, these are the.
Oh, there you go.
Can you see now? So. The warrants for the month of March.
Did you want me to recite that? I can do that.
Go for it, Steve.
Okay, accounts payable right now, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars, forty-eight cents. Payroll, um, sixty thousand, six twenty-seven eighty-four. Payroll other disbursements, one million, four hundred and fifty thousand, eight eighty-one sixty. And payroll deductions, which has helped until retirement dues, et cetera, is eight hundred fifty-four thousand. Of dollars, thirty cents with a total of three million, ninety-four thousand, four sixty-five twenty-two.
Uh, at this time I'll entertain a motion to accept check warrants as red.
I can make that motion. Sorry.
Terry is the first, a second.
I'll second. Devin.
Devin second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, I think what we'll do for voting, since everyone's muted. Uh, for eyes, just give, uh, raise your hand and same thing for nays when I ask for them and abstentions. And then there's a couple of people I can't see. I'll ask you guys directly. Uh, so all those in favor of accepting the motion as red for check warrants, signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
He says aye.
That was nine zero. That was easy.
If I could just say something, Chris, um, just because last time, the last few months, I've explained to the board that we sort of went onto a spending hiatus for a little while and that was. Um, and we had requested prior to that, that all of the, um, teachers and administrators and facility directors put in all the requests for spending throughout the remainder of the year. Of course, right after that happened, um. We got hit with this COVID situation and obviously that may mean that needs change. Um, and so, um, once the administration has solidified that continuity of learning plan, um, and. Teachers will realize what those needs might be. I, and, um, then we'll meet as administrators this Friday to talk about what, what that means for needs as far as supplies and materials. Um, and how that will change, uh, the requests that have already been put in. We'll work through it the best that we can, um, and I apologize for the timing of all of this, but it does make it a little tricky because, you know, we had. Hundreds and hundreds of purchase orders and requisitions put in that probably are now not going to be realized. Um, and so we're, we're realized in a different manner. So we'll be working through that, but I just wanted to make the board aware. It's not like we forgot what we were doing. It's a bad situation got worse is what happened, unfortunately, but we'll, we're working on it.
Just added to the list of things to do, right? Okay, uh. So we'll move on to new teacher hires.
So Laura, I don't know if you can present that.
Yes, I can try.
So we have been working hard even through this, um, period of time. To do position requisitions, uh, for, uh, new hires electronically. To, uh, interview candidates through Zoom or Google meets. And I have been meeting every new teacher candidate, um, through Google meets. Um, we have, uh. I'm going to have to stand up because I can't see it from this far away. How sad is that?
Is that the right one? Oh, sorry.
Now you may.
I'm sorry. Where did it go?
Okay, for Swanton, we have a new kindergarten teacher and a new first grade teacher. Uh, I met both of them through Google, um, and they were both, uh, wonderful, very lucky to have them both. Um, we have, uh, Jessica Bordeaux. We have Jessica Bordeaux, who is coming back to our school, she was in Franklin Northeast here this year, and she's going to be our new marrow coach at Swanton. And we are lucky enough to have two vacancies filled at MBU. A new ad mechanics teacher who comes from Beekman Town High School, who is quite the fine, and we're very excited about her. And a new business teacher coming to us and Jen, not entirely here, talking about where he is, where he is, all been to New York. So I've met all of those folks, they're all, HR has figured out when doing all of this electronically, but we're moving forward because our teacher contracts are due back by April 17th. We already have a number of teachers that are, we know may not be coming back, we will have some that will let us know for sure when teacher contracts are back. So we're right in the middle of the hiring season. So it's been going pretty smoothly.
That's good that you had checks to meet up, that's really good.
Well, the board wanted me to meet every new teacher and I really committed to making that happen.
That's good.
And I love it, it's great.
Are, 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 just some of the new teachers you mentioned in Swanton, they're new to us, are they new in the field of teaching?
You know what, so far, everyone has had a few years of experience. Yep. They're, they're, I think we've been very lucky, we have other positions we know we're going to have to, our, our administrators are determined to get out early and get the best pool of candidates they can, and they're making it happen. So I don't know if we need a motion for you to sign teacher contracts, or are we going to do that every time, or we've already had a motion for you to sign teacher contracts?
We had a motion for me to sign, me or the vice chair to sign.
Okay. So this is really just to let people know where we are, I guess.
Seeing no questions, I will move on to other business action, administrative contracts, which we're probably going to have an executive session for.
I would think so, since it's talking about negotiation of administrative contracts. And we should, the next agenda item is talking about negotiations, we should probably discuss that as well.
So we are ready for executive session unless there's anything else.
Can, can we break the executive session into two parts? Because I know that Devin is implying to leave us when we talk about the association.
Right.
I think it'd be important that he be part of the other discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll start with the administration contracts, the first part of executive session, then the second part we'll discuss negotiations. And at which time Devin will leave us.
So you want a motion for that and then I will turn off the recording.
Right. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, inviting in Julie and, do we need Laura for this?
Probably not, Laura, you can probably go home.
So we're going to just, somebody did something. I think, oh yeah, okay. Yep. So inviting in Julie. So first for the motion.
I will.
Don's the first, second.
I'll second, Steve.
Steve is the second, any discussion?
Robert asked a question about how it would work for folks not invited in, are we, can we kick them out or do we have to start a new meeting?
We're not going to start a new meeting, we're going to experiment. I can see everyone and Yvette and Robert are the only two left and they would go and Laura. And then I'll unrecord it and if we have a motion, I should be able to record the motion and the ending of the meeting. And if that doesn't work, we'll try something different next time. And I would just suggest that, you know, even though we're going to an executive session, it's, I don't know how secure it really is, so we'll just be cognizant of the fact that we could have some secret person listening in. I don't think so, but it's possible.
Yeah, Devin, it's just you.
Have you voted yet?
We have not. So all those in favor of going to executive session, raise your hand. Devin, can you hear us?
I don't think we can.
I don't think so either, so.
I'm going to text Devin. Oh, he's gone.
Well, as of right now, it's eight zero and I believe we lost Devin.
You did, you left the meeting.
Did they bring you back on?
Oh, you just come back.
Yeah. Get him back on, put it there straight.
Are you there?
Devin? He's talking.
We see you, but we can't hear you. There, we hear you now.
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Excellent. Devin, if you get, if, if you, you could always dial in that phone number instead of clicking the link.
Yeah, okay, I may do that if I have trouble again.
Okay.
Okay, we were in the, when we lost you, we were in the middle of voting, so far it's eight zero to go into executive session. Are you a yea or nay for that?
I am a yea.
So we are going into executive session at eight, seven thirty.
There we go.
So we are now in regular session once again. Coming out of executive, we don't have any motions needed.
No, but I did want to bring up to you something that occurred to me when we were talking about administrators. The administrators have at MBU been buying donuts from a locally owned store, not a chain, for the folks that are doing food service and volunteering and delivering and I, I know the board would support that expense not to be coming out of their own pocket. So it's not a motion, but I just, if people nod at me that they're in support of that, wonderful. I think that will be good news for them and much appreciated.
So unless somebody has anything further to add, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eight eleven. Ooh, Peter.
Everybody's rising there.
Ju- Julie, how is all the, how are the teachers handling? I know a lot of them are going above and beyond, working with the food service and delivering meals and all that. And, you know, you talked about this good camaraderie with the, you know, bringing donuts and that kind of stuff. How is all that going? Is it still going as smoothly or are people still, you know, supportive and, and understand the situation?
Peter, I'm so glad you brought that up, it has been remarkable. The administrators have been planning all along for, you know, obviously, if people get sick, they're going to be backing out. If people have reasons, but we thought that once they had to switch over to continuation of learning, that, you know, we'd be losing people. Honestly, the administration has created a rotation, we don't meet as many people on the bus as we did at first now that we sort of have a routine going. But they're pushing out, they pushed out eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six meals on Friday to families in our three towns. Unbelievable. And they are so excited. There was a kid in a dinosaur costume who came out to pick up the food. That was up on Facebook, you know, the, they've been so excited to see students and the love that they're getting from kids and that they're showing, not, nobody has been saying, oh, you know, forgive me, I just can't do it anymore, it's too hard. You know, we have had no trouble getting people and we don't expect to get people, have any trouble getting people over the April break. Of course, nobody's flying off to Italy. Well, that was a terrible joke.
Too soon.
Too soon.
Too soon.
But, nobody's going away, we're all home, we're all home.
I think it's like a part of the journey this movie.
All right.
Well, we got some more hands, Jen, Jen, then Terry, then Megan.
I just wanted to say, and I should have said it earlier, but I was just trying to absorb everything, but as far as coming from a perspective of having one in middle school and having one in high school, the communication that I have personally been receiving from the schools via email, personal phone calls from teachers checking in, explaining how everything's going to be starting next week with being able, the kids being able to do a teleconference and everything, I think has been, I am tremendously happy as a parent. This is week number four for me working from home and it is difficult juggling, hey, did you do your work, have you been on, you know, this, that and everything else? Plus, my work's been extremely busy. So I think that I commend the school and everybody, all the teachers there, that I think they're doing a really great job of, even though they haven't been able to present new stuff to teach them, they've been keeping them engaged with, hey, do reading logs for me, let's re-review the math, let's re-review the history. I'm in full support of everything that they're doing and I am extremely pleased as, as of coming from as a parent and a school board member. I just wanted to say that.
I'd also iterate that I have one in elementary school, one in middle school and one in high school, and so three different levels of school and I can't, all three have been phenomenal. And we're not home yet. We had to shut down our business Friday, but up until then, we've been gone every day and my kids have been keeping up, they have, they, we created a school schedule for them, but they, and they follow it, the teacher's been great. I, I have, I'm so impressed, very impressed. Terry.
I just wanted to add too, briefly, that I think it's the Messenger article, I thought it was great that they covered us, but I don't even think they began to, to touch upon how, the magnitude of the food that's really going out and the volunteerism that's going on. And I think it was really prudent and wise of you, Julie, to put that letter to the editor in there today and I hope that we continue to have communication in the Messenger because I think our community's doing great work. There was one other thing I wanted to ask about that and that is, you know, I know a little bit about what's going on in the Northeast District because of my daughter teaching there, but I'm just curious about here, do, does everybody have internet or do they get it free if they don't have it? How are y'all dealing with that? That's a question I wondered.
Well, we have, we did do a survey and we were at ninety-five percent. And then we have alternate plans for those that don't, but the agency of Ed is trying to drill down, really down to neighborhoods and families to see if there are things that we can do to provide. We've given people free resources, but it's, you know, sometimes the reason somebody doesn't have internet is that they couldn't pay their bill for a while because they were going through hardship or there isn't anything in their area. So, you know, we do have, and some of these free things are, you know, free for a little while and not necessarily for the long term. So the state is actually really concerned about this as well, so we're working closely with them because it would be really helpful if we could get above that ninety-five percent.
Yeah, because it must be really hard for teachers to, to, to do their lesson plans and everything when it's just not total to everybody anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you to all of the teachers and administrators. I know that this is incredibly stressful. I know that for them it is, for parents it is, you know, I have a six-year-old and a nine-year-old at home and working full-time and trying to juggle all of that and stay sane in the midst of this. And it's stressful for all of us and I just want all of our teachers, all of our administrators, all of our staff to know that parents might be stressed, but we're still so, so appreciative of everything that you're doing and I know how many hours you're putting in. My kids miss you and just thank you.
On the record, recording, is it Steve, Mr.?
Yes.
Really nice communications. Did everybody get that?
Yep.
Steve did a really good job, I thought that was really great, the Thunderbird community.
Yeah, yeah. Now, everybody, I, I tell you, the teachers were grieving when the governor closed school and we certainly understand why he did for the rest of the year, but.
It makes sense now.
It, boy, let me tell you, the teachers miss kids, our administrators miss kids, it's, it's just not the same. But we know that they're out there and they need us and teachers are, you know, learning how to do things completely differently because of their commitment to our kids.
Changing education.
That absolutely is.
So at this, oop, Jen.
Sorry, one more thing. Are we going to put in, for the future, a future agenda of possibly talking about something we can do for our senior class for graduation?
Oh, yes. We don't know what, we, we, we will be getting guidance about end of year activities. Once we're in the middle of May, we can expect more of an idea. But honestly, if we can't have a graduation in June, I don't care if it's July or August, we're going to have a graduation.
Good, that, very good. Thanks.
Me, I would expect that, that we won't be alone with that.
Thank you.
I, I don't know, first, of course, I have a stake in the game on this one, I, I would like to see us do graduations at all levels, you know, middle school, high school, elementary school, because it's, it's an end of year celebration that I don't think should be lost because of this.
I agree.
So, at this point, seeing no other hands in the air, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eight twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Peter's the first, second.
I'll second.
I think it was Jen that was the second. All those in favor of adjourning, raise your hands. We are adjourned, thank you very much.